I'm turning to a Baptist preacher now.
You know where I work, I ain't got much.
But again, I want to thank everyone for coming out today. I know the mayor has already presented a exposure from the epidemic threat, but also very important that the legislative branch put some things in place also as it relates to the coronavirus virus. And today, it's very important that we have all the stakeholders here today to help us with this situation, this crisis. It's going to be very important that all can our own bit to work through this problem. And I know the federal government has already set down guidelines and also the state. But today, it's going to be very important to address the need here in the city of Salem to provide opportunities and information for our citizens in Selma and Dallas County. I have also written to each radio station in the area asking for a public service announcement so if you would like to go on the airway to do a public service announcement as it relates to the services that you are providing during this crisis here, you may. Also, I'd like to recognize some of my county council members here. Councilman Jonathan Shore, who represents Ward Six, Councilwoman Dana Thomas, who represents Ward Seven, and who's also on the Public Safety Committee, and Councilwoman Youngblood, who's on the Public Safety Committee. Thank you, Councilman Randolph, and also Councilman Randolph, who represents Ward Five. Some of the measures that the council will be taking during this crisis is to have a soft culture that's going to be up to the mayor. Operation hours, we're looking at, talking with the mayor to see what would be actionable during this time. Also, the council is moving forward with suspension or rental of all public buildings. All the events that we have in our public buildings, we're moving forward with the suspension of all their assets. In addition to that, it would be a cancellation of our March 23 work session and March 24 council meeting. So the next council meeting, along with the work session, will be council. And the council, in addition to that, would appropriate funding for two COVID enforcement officers. With all the tracks around the city of Salem, it's going to be very important that we appropriate funding for two part-time COVID enforcement officers. And in addition to that, we would be going to contract with someone to clean up all the public buildings, businesses here and all the public buildings. And last but not least, like I mentioned to you before, that we would be doing public service announcements on all of the radio entities. If you have, if you would like to go to the radio station to also disseminate the information. Once again, thank you for coming out. This is going to be very important to me to put together a plan to see what we can do. The one of the most important things in addition is getting the virus information. Because I said, with quality information, you can make a quality decision. And that's what we're here to do today. And again, thank all the stakeholders who are here today. If you would come forward, just give us information, we can move forward from there. First, we have Front Region of Madison, local station McCord, if you'd be willing to come forward, and also, if you want to be with us, please come forward.
Thanks. Yeah, good evening. Thank y'all very much for coming. Just a couple of updates. I have my two expert infection prevention folks. They've been following this very closely, following this very closely. They're in touch with the state and federal CDC. So we're doing everything we can at our facility to make sure we stay current with all the latest information on this. We have today met, and under the federal recommendations of what we're doing, we're going to restrict access to the hospital. We will only be able to have people come through the front main entrance or through the emergency room. Once they do come in, we will have a questionnaire following the CDC guidelines as to what their situation is. Do they have a cough? Have they been out, exposed to anyone? Do they have fever? We will limit visitors to the hospital, or one visitor per patient at a time. And they'll go through a little registration process, they go visit the patient. When they leave, another patient, another visitor can come and see that patient. But we're not going to allow a bunch of folks to come in and congregate. We're not allowing them to be in the hospital. They have to stay outside the hospital. In the emergency room, we'll have the same process going on. Patients that come in, they feel like they may have exposed or they're exhibiting some of the symptoms, we will question them there. And if they meet the CDC criteria, which means they have a fever, they've been possibly exposed, or they have been in an area where there is a virus, and they have a shortness of breath, then we'll take further steps on them. We're not a testing site. We don't have any testing sites thus far in Dallas County. The lab org organization is trying to work that out. Supposedly, they will be one one day. Right now, we have no one testing. Now, we are able to collect samples. They collect samples at the health department, various physician offices, and our hospital, again, we won't even test or take a sample unless you meet the criteria of what is what diseases we have. We've got to be very careful that we don't want to make it a crisis, though it is a crisis. But right now, we want to make sure if everybody starts coming and running to the hospital, then we're not going to be able to take care of the real situation. And that's what we have to do there. So we're asking people to just stay home if they're concerned and not feeling good. They stay home. Social distancing, I think that's the appropriate word now, is what works. Fortunately, the virus does have a short lifespan. So if you feel bad, just stay home. If you don't want to go get caught, catch it, then you stay home. But don't just, everybody start running out to all the emergency rooms and all the various physicians and all the physician offices, because that's not going to do any good. We're overwhelmed, we do not have the silver candle back. It's not. Also, our cafeteria will be closed, and our gift shop will be closed. We're closing all of our waiting areas because we're just trying to follow the federal guidelines to keep congregations from milling around, and if they do have it, it's affecting someone else. So, y'all having any?
What are their names?
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Albert.
Albert.
Jackie.
Jackie Motry.
Have you had any contact from the federal government or from the state department about, give you any guidance or coordination with what you do more often?
Yes, they are sending out almost hour of information. Most of it's pretty set. The only updates we're getting are how many people are infected across the country. But all the information is pretty set. We have protocols in place that we deal with infectious disease every day. And the flu has been here for a while. I was thinking about the life, but certainly been here this year for a while. So we deal with those things on an ongoing basis. We have protocols in place where we, you know, have a protection different with our staff after, after where when they go in and take care of patients, make sure that we're not infecting someone else or catching ourselves. Right now, we want to make sure our staff and our patients are not exposed. And the best way to not be exposed, stay home. Unless you're coming to a very important meeting like this, then unfortunately, be here. But overall, if you feel like you have any symptoms, it's not severe for you, then you stay home. But if you do get in a situation where it is severe, then you definitely.
The president and the vice president, another update, maybe an hour ago, maybe rolled out a 15 days to halt. And they're saying that they're going to try these restrictions and approaches every 15 days instead of setting a deadline. Is that?
Yeah, that makes sense. I was not, I did not get to see that interview, but that does make sense. And I think that's why a lot of buildings and a lot of businesses, schools certainly are being closed for the 15, 15 day cycle.
Would that be the same with the cafeteria?
Yes, yes, yes. We're going to close until we see what happens. And we're getting guidance from, like I said, the feds and the state daily. And right now, we're following their guideline. Yes, sir.
I have horrible respiratory problems. I guess y'all have all the memory.
Yeah.
I can't. How do you, what do you advise patients who normally, if they're suffering from respiratory allergies, would you advise them to take their family position further?
Well, first, they should stay home. Okay? And then do what they normally do. What did you do last year in this type of situation?
Pollen.
Yeah, okay. So that's, you know, and then they'll advise you on what you need to do. But yeah, this is a, that's a routine situation. You're probably used to doing that. I did see one blog that said that fine pollen will kill it. So we're hoping that's not killing it. Fine, that pollen is so thick in air, you know, it's going to cause a few more problems in the world. But thank y'all very much for coming and showing your interest. The kids just don't panic, don't everybody freak out, but stay inside if you're not feeling good. Don't risk going out and infecting anyone else, especially the people that are vulnerable, the elderly, the people that do have respiratory issues, you know, just don't get around. Better be safe and sorry, this will pass, it's in the for everything. We get through this process, we're back in motion. But thank y'all.
Now, I've heard that the alcohol and bourbon killed it, is that true?
I'm going to test that tonight, yes.
Okay, me too.
I just need to address this. You know, I keep saying, oh, the federal place, you know, and it's like, you know, when I go, I'm not going to have to, I'm going to have to.
You're addicted, yeah.
But anyway, you know, I was saying, oh, it's just the flu, no more, no less. So X number of people die over the flu every year. Well, that's like saying, you know, somewhat something to feel about strokes because so many people got heart attacks in the year. You know, it, you know, you would gross that out.
Yes, and we do want to prevent it. It is a type flu, flu is a virus similar to that. But the key is to not let it get out of hand. It is more contagious than the normal flu. And people in certain compromised situations, it is more deadly. So we want to just try not to let it spread.
And we don't have a tendency to correct nineteen.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have two reps on the health department. Any questions that you may have for them, you can ask them after the meeting. Next, we have Dr. Park.
Thank you. I'm Park Chinam, I'm an internist here in town. I'd like to mirror what Mr. McCormick had to say about being wise. If you have a cold, if you have the flu, and you can stay home, let's do it. Okay? Very reasonable question. I got out in the pollen, I cleaned out a closet, I got the runny nose, I got a cough. That's not the time to go to the emergency room. Not necessarily the time to come to the physician. This is all new for us all. Okay? Yes, we do have the flu, but we all recognize that this is a little bit different. Some of the insurance companies are doing some things, but they don't want to talk about it a whole lot because I don't know all the details. But I got an update actually while Mr. McCormick was speaking about some things that various insurance companies are doing that are making this a little bit more palatable. I can say this much, the company will say in this much, they're going to make it easier for patients to call their doctors and get some advice and get some help. Testing, I think, will shortly be more available. I'd love to tell you when, but I think everybody's real interested in seeing that happen. Okay? Now, to Ms. Youngblood's point, yes, this is a big deal, and we don't want anybody to get it. But for the individual person that's in good health, may or will not be the biggest deal. On the other hand, we have a lot of people that we consider very, very valuable that might be at risk. And so us not getting it helps them not get it. So it is worthwhile, so these preventive measures are worthwhile. Now, you'll notice that we're all learning. So I just put my hand on the microphone, somebody else said that. Well, we're learning, okay? And so, well, that's okay. I mean, I'm not pointing the blame here, but the point is that we do need to be careful. We may need to rethink a few things. I don't know if y'all can see the big bottle of Dermax that's what $175 worth of Dermax right here. So in any case, it is worthwhile to rethink a few things. I think the health department and the CDC and so forth, everybody would agree, when you walk in the house, use some Dermax, wash your hands. I would argue that washing your hands is better than Dermax. But wash your hands, wash your hands as much as you can possibly do. If your hands get dry, mine do all the time, that's probably the problem. Wash your hands as much as you can. If your hands get too dry, use lotion, okay? But let's do the hand washing. The illness is spread by droplets, I think we've all heard that. It's also apparently spread by fumites, which is a medical term for stub, like microphones. Your government, your city council, everybody that I've run into is really interested in seeing how this goes. I would expect us, somebody said 15 days, I would expect there to be ongoing things. I have a phone call that I'm going to be involved in with Alabama Department of Public Health later this evening. I would venture to say that there may be some change that comes from that. Okay, I don't know what it might be. If I knew what they were going to say, then they wouldn't need to say it, I guess. So, each group of doctors is trying to do some things to help people make a good decision about whether or not they come in. I can't speak to what other officers are doing because I've only heard secondhand. We appreciate everybody being patient with us today. We're trying to check temperature if people walk in the door. And obviously, somebody that has a high temperature, that raises our levels of concerns, and it probably raises other people's levels of concern. You have a high fever, when we say high fever, we mean 100.5. 99.5 is perfectly reasonable for somebody that's sitting out in the sun, or somebody that's jogging, or high, feels hot. So a true infection suggests the temperature. Usually, the illness, when it has symptoms, it has runny nose and cough, muscle aches and pains, are the typical, what's been reported, not that I've seen any of it, but those are the typically reported things. And I would say, if you have a question, now, we're a hard grouping culture, and so we like to go to work, we don't want to miss work, we don't want to miss church yesterday. We don't want to miss this thing. This might be the time to go ahead and miss. Find something good that you can do around the house, something productive, something useful at home, and be patient with ourselves, be patient with our employees, be patient with our employers, working all this out. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Do you have a private practice?
Yes, sir.
So what happens in a situation where in the waiting room, you know, you have a lot of patients in the waiting room, like is there a way for you to enforce the social distancing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Now, it's an imperfect system, and we're all working that out. But as it stands right now, I would, you know, and again, I can't speak for other physicians, but we're making an effort to screen people before they come in. And if they fail a screening, or if they suggest that maybe they have an illness, can we take one pack? Only do we bring them into the waiting room if they do not have, if they don't seem like they failed the screening. Failed is a strong word, but I think I did what I meant.
What about if I don't have a thermometer? How do I put?
We have thermometers.
What I mean, if I'm at home?
If you, well, you know, that's a really good question. CDC has answered that. If you think you have a fever, you have a fever. My suggestion would be, okay, my suggestion would be to make an effort to get a thermometer if you've got a real concern. But that's perfectly valid, CDC has answered that question. If you think you have a fever, then you have a fever. Now, I don't like that. I think that's probably going to make some people think that they're sick when they're not. But if it makes some people that think they're sick stay at home, I'm kind of for it. Okay? Now, it's a small percentage of people will still need help anyway if they get sick. I would say if you are vomiting, you are short of breath, if you become dehydrated, you get into an extreme situation, you may still have some need. And I would say call your physician would be a great place to start failing that. There may be some time to seek some help, even though you are sick. Probably a better way to say that, but you know, if you're really sick, we really want to help you. Okay, whether you've got a virus or not. Any other questions? Okay, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Um, people have had a building, a lot of them, in the, if they have to become ill, if they threaten to become ill.
Physicians, no.
But that's why I'm looking over, because I don't think that possible, that you, that you, that you have to go through the whole process.
Right, right. So, you know, there's so many permutations to that. So somebody might have this illness, and somebody else might have that illness, and so forth and so on. Just because somebody has a runny nose doesn't mean that they need extreme measures. And I think we've all run into that. We've all had days where we kind of wish we didn't have to go to work and we could stay home. Those folks, please stay home. Somebody that's in an extreme situation, well, it is an extreme situation, okay? And so sometimes it can be hard to tell. And sometimes it can be upsetting to have to deal with that. We don't want you to have to go through that alone, okay? And so the insurances are doing some things to try to make that a little bit easier for us. I think every physician I know of is really interested in helping folks, and I know that the hospital is too. And that would be the perfect example of one of those times where it might be worthwhile to seek some extra help. And it'd be nice if, you know, it could happen during normal business hours too, you know, which is nice, but nine and a half is a lot. So, in any case, I haven't spent a bunch of time on it today. I've gotten a lot of value out of calling, out of looking at the CDC's website, and so let me encourage you to do that. And I've, you know, they have special positions, lines. I've called them a bunch of times, they've tried to be very real. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Dr. Chinam, this is for you, hospital, and health professional people. Um, we've heard about some places that have been live for you. Do we know anything about the possibility to add some to a 12 year old?
We're not at all.
I just, we're waiting, I know, I can see that happening, and we're not going to say it, we're just aware of that. So I just want to put that down, and that's what we're doing, so we don't want to do that.
Yeah, you know, I don't have anything that I would put a stake in, but I've heard rumors of there being places where people have been tested here, there, and I think there's a lot of interest, and I think there will be a lot of those. Now, I don't know when to do, where to begin, but I have, I can't, I feel like I've made a movement toward that since in the last 30 minutes. I think that's not right. Okay, in the last 30 minutes.
And one more question, then, I have a luxury of being at home, watching TV today. I saw where your kids might not be served, or it was a case that they were first, the vaccine, is that?
Test.
Cheers.
It's going to take a year before they know the word.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, it was developed in Massachusetts, and it was shipped to Seattle for a research facility to be tested on, on humans. And that's one of numerous that are tested on animals already.
So, so we never let you out, that's, 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 so that's not, that's not going to be, that's not going to be.
No, just in general, when and if those vaccines become available, they will first be available for those that are at the highest risk, and those that have the most likelihood of having a serious result. And so if and when those come out, which will not be in the next 15 days. I don't think you can get a pizza that quick. But in any case, if, that's, that's, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of a long ways off. So our best strategy at this point is to try to help us make sure that we don't overstretch what our, what our healthcare can provide. And I think our healthcare system has some ability to flex, but we could conceivably, you know, not want to, if we could help it, and not, and it'd be nice if we could avoid that.
We know, we are going to be, you know, about some people here, they're going to say, you know, you don't need.
Sure, well, I'm asking them myself. And, but, and so, the reason I can't say it 100% is the person that passed me message along is not in a position of power and control. But he pointed out that like most vaccines, they will be limited supply. So it wouldn't look for us to, you know, right now, we've got, you know, the next 15 days, if we go late, the time is ending, we've got to buckle down and make sure we use our resources appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. I recognize Councilwoman Hammond, just walked in. Next, we have Mr. Patrick Gerkey, Edmonite Missin, people, President, Mr. Everything.
And there's a point to that. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give you a couple of brief updates, what's going on in the missions. First of all, we are open for business. We are not closed. Some general comments that I really want to make, unfortunately, I'm glad that Facebook is running, Sam, because a lot of the folks that we deal with at least have access to that and should be hearing this information, so I'm thankful that at least it's getting out somewhere. Unfortunately, in the room, we don't have those that are most highly affected by what is, I guess, is a matter of time, and certainly, you get here in Dallas County, Selma, the poor. And so there are some efforts being made by, I believe, and I suppose Aubrey will probably speak about it, by the utility companies and the water company, suspending payments. And although some might find this to be a quick benefit, it is absolutely not a benefit for those poor to do and avail themselves of that. I would ask that if there is a client or someone out there that does have a disconnect notice, do not ignore it. Come to the mission as you normally would to try to get you back on track. If, in fact, you let these bills pile up, until June 1st, you're going to be that much deeper in the hole, and then your disconnect's going to come in the heat of the summer. So I think that it's interesting that this is happening now because it raises a very real problem, 12 months out of the year for the poor. Sanitation, heat, cooling, the whole, again. So I think this is a great opportunity for us as a city to look about what are the long-term solutions to these problems, not just during a crisis situation. So I think there is a lot more to be done here. I would ask those that can not get behind on their bills, if you come to the mission for assistance, continue to come. Let us work without them a power. Let us work with the gas company. Let us work with the water company. Not let these disconnect notices go unheated. It is not an extra $30 where you're making decisions, I know already, about medication, or getting your nails done, or your hair did, or whatever it may be. Do not take that extra money and believe that it's free money. Because come June 1st, there's going to be a severe problem. And I can tell you, if you wait, the missions will run out of money and will not be able to assist everyone. So fair warning, get in line now, stay up with your bills, stay up with what you need to do, be responsible. We learned today that most people, if they hit a $400 crisis in their life, they would go bankrupt today. Most of our folks do not even have that. They're living on $11,000 a year. So we have some serious problems here, but important problems that I think as a city, we need to address when this is over and figure out how. and figure out how are we going to deal with not just a crisis situation where we come together, but talk about the state of our city and poverty and how are we going to deal with the folks that are in need twelve months, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. So that's, that's on that. So please, send folks to us and not let them get behind on their bills. It's not extra money in their pocket. You know, the payment is going to come for the money come June first. Do you do things or whatever your payday is in June when all of this expires and the urgency of what's going on fades into the distance. So Catholic Social Ministries is open, eight thirty to four thirty. If anybody wants to come in, we are practicing safe practices. So only three clients at a time will be allowed in the waiting room and then vetted through. Our Bosco operation is open, is open seven days a week as, as been practiced. We are also beginning our breakfast bags tomorrow from eight to nine thirty. And anyone that needs a breakfast can have one through spring break and into the future. It'll be simple, cereal, granola bars, juice, milk, whatever the case may be, fruit. But that'll be available from eight to nine thirty at Bosco. Lunch will be served and dinner will be served. As it is now, if you have no place to go, you can come in and get your food and sit down, order a table. Moving folks in and out, you can also get a plate to go. So for those folks that are homeless or don't have home, they can at least sit down and eat in a dignified space. Those that have a home can get their plates and take them as they see fit. Our Meals of Hope program, so we serve about a thousand of those a day, folks. So it's not a small number coming in and going out. We deliver three hundred and ten in-home meals called Meals of Hope. So we will be doing wellness checks on those three hundred and ten folks that we deal with on a daily basis to make sure that they are well. They will have their food, and we will ensure that if they're taking their medication, just reinforce that they're taking their medication and again, using sanitizing agents if they, if they, just as a reminder, before they eat, wash their vegetables, whatever the case may be, but to wash their hands. The Bosco, the community center is delayed opening until middle of April, just out of, out of caution. The YMCA's are closing very quickly, and so we figured why infect a brand-new space? So we're going to keep that closed until mid-May. Our after-school programs have shuttered until the beginning of April. Be determined when we start those back up, again, just following along with some of the school, school guidelines and when and if it hits Dallas County. As far as I know, and I don't know if the county health knows, do we have any confirmed cases in Dallas County yet? So we're still, we're still keeping it at bay. Maybe that's our prayer. But so, I don't know. Anything else, Joe? Yeah, the programming is canceled, but the feeding programs and the Catholic Social Ministry is the aid to utility assistance and that, it's still on track. And like I said, the food is available. So now we'll have breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Just lunch and dinner. And, yes.
I just want to try to find a way to throw the basics in, get in touch with the board, and then we should call.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Folks deserve it. So we've got to make sure we take care of them. Well, thank you. And just saying, and we are doing all the right precautions at Bosco, the distancing, the sanitizing. If anybody would like a copy of our release that we put out, that might be helpful, just so that you have that. And also, if anybody is requiring about a public space and what we're doing at Bosco to ensure safety, we have that for you as well. And Joe can handle that if anybody would like that. Yeah. Yeah, we'll be, and if folks, I'll say if somebody does become ill, or if you know of somebody that can't get out to get food, have them contact Catholic Social Ministry, and we'll ensure that something gets there and get them, get them on the way. If folks need to be in and aren't free to be about, just give us a call so that we can help take care of whatever that means. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you have any of this on a website?
Yes, all of our stuff's here on Facebook, on the night mission.
In the night mission, so on Facebook. Okay. And what about the breakfast?
Yes.
For, for kids who are in school? I understand when the governor is beginning to provide breakfast for some of the school kids. Are you, are you set up the handle with kids that would normally be in school?
That's right. For, in fact, what we've decided to do, because we realize some parents will probably not be able to go to school or go to work, that we will, and like I said, it'll be a very simple breakfast, a grab and go. Like I said, cereal with milk or pizza, fruit, something, basically to get them to lunchtime when we open at eleven thirty. So it's just, so anybody that, that needs a breakfast bag can come and get a breakfast bag. We're not restricting it. And we're starting tomorrow, even though folks were wondering if we would be doing it because it's spring break. And so the schools typically wouldn't be offering anything during a spring break. And so we, we're starting ours tomorrow, and we'll be going for the foreseeable future.
And lastly, I think you talked about the social distancing. Is that going to slow down, like if there's a line, you know what I mean? Are you going to create a line if this is very?
Sure, yeah. And what we have found already is that many folks are coming in and getting a meal for them and their mother or grandmother or whatever. So folks are actually already beginning the process of taking those meals out and taking them home. So at this point, at lunchtime, it was very, very seamless. But we're offering a space for those that don't have a home. At least they can, they can be there in this space. Wow. I'm up here. Anybody else? Any other questions? Cory, hurry. They're just staring at me now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Harvey Carter and Mr. Wayne Lautman, lights on, and they need the cereal's number.
I guess he's trying to draw a line.
This man keeps the lights on.
He does.
It's hope better than me to ask you to light it on.
I definitely see you. Cory, thank you for the invitation today. Thank you all for coming out. My name is Albert Carter. I'm with Alldown Power, and just want to give you a few updates on kind of where, where we are. We've been actively monitoring COVID nineteen virus, and we've implemented plans to make sure that we ensure continuity of services while keeping our employees safe and, and keeping service to the general public. Like many of the businesses you heard probably in the news, we are practicing social distancing. And so some of our folks are working from home and also in the competition. But they stand ready to get the light back on if, 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 if needed. As a matter of fact, I apologize because that's something our folks can.